Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the November eighteenth County Commissioners's Regular Meeting. The first item on the agenda is call to order, call the meeting to order, roll call. Commissioner Gozar.
Here.
Commissioner Hoff.
Here.
Commissioner Jones, present. Please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is for a public hearing. We have none. Item four, would anyone like to make comments from the public, either in the room or online? Come on up, Rob.
As you know, we kind of had a fire incident here a week ago or so. I just want to give a shout out to the Run Bridge crew. We had three blades out there and then towards the end, we had an excavator tearing down a haystack and then the dozer pushing out so that you get pushed out. That night, it ended up being more of a support group for the power line, the power company, pulling the equipment across the soft areas and stuff. So I just want to do a shout out to those guys.
Well, thank you. And that was, that was quite an ordeal out there.
Yeah, yeah. I think that everybody learned some things there also, so.
Yeah, I think it turned out, I think it turned out well.
Yeah.
As well as a fire can turn out. Actually, it'll probably be nice out there this coming spring with all that. Would anyone else like to make comments? Come on up.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm going to make Sarah and Amanda come with me. So I'm sure most of you, if not all of you, know Sarah Gonzalez. She's the Administrative Assistant out at Extension, and she was just awarded the Administrative Extension Professional of the Year from that organization. I just want to give a shout out to Sarah. I've worked with Sarah Colson. She's a rock star.
Thank you.
But I'll let Amanda kind of explain what all Sarah does to keep us in line.
Okay. Yes, so I was just going to read, I think my thing got cut off and I didn't bring my phone with me, but I will see how far I can get. So yes, we just, two weeks ago, I let you all know that we were going to be closed for a couple of days to go to Epic, our professional development conference up on campus. And so part of that, we have an awards being quit, and there was an award for Administrative Professional of the Year, and Sarah was nominated, and she won. And so that award recognizes and established GW Extension Administration Professional for her contributions to University of Wyoming Extension and their excellent work. So this award is for those holding an administrative professional position with the University of Extension System for at least five years. And so Sarah was awarded that. So a nominator wrote about Sarah. Sarah's impact goes far beyond her job description. She is the person who makes everything work seamlessly. She organizes newsletters with care, keeps budgets and reports, and helps plan and run events that strengthen our Extension Office. She's consistently kind and welcoming to everyone she encounters. Her friendliness sets the tone for our entire office. Her ability to juggle countless responsibilities from keeping the office running to answering phone calls with a smile is remarkable. She works independently, but is also a true team player and always ready to lend a helping hand when needed. She approaches each day with enthusiasm and a genuine love for her work, embracing the diversity and challenges that come with it. No matter the task, Sarah meets every situation with positivity, professionalism, and grace. So.
Well, that's very nice.
Just wanted to share that with you.
But I have to say that I see Sarah on a very regular basis. And what you just said is all true.
Well, thank you.
So yes.
You're very lucky to have Sarah.
Congratulations.
So much to bring back. And then that's all for that. And then I just wanted to bring with me today, I finalized our kind of year-end reports as it's getting close to the end of the calendar year. But then on the 4H side, the end of our year was the end of September. So I just wanted to pass along our little 4H kind of year review, which has a few little snapshots with pictures and some numbers that I wanted to pass along to all the commissioners today.
Thank you.
So I brought that to recognize Sarah. But Sarah's the most important part of our.
She's very important. That, that position's always been important, ever since I was a little kid, so. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment, either in the room or online?
Madam Chair, I'd like to take a moment and in addition to Run Bridge, thank all the other county departments that participated in the fire. I know EMA, the Fairgrounds, the Sheriff's Office, County Fire Warden, and I know Fire District One. Thank you.
And I second exactly what Thad said. Thad and I were both out at the Fairgrounds. And that, that was doing his magic that he does.
Doing nerdy radio stuff.
Okay, so moving on to item five, consideration of changes to the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move on to six, disclosures.
I have none, Madam Chair.
And more for me.
And I do not believe I have any. Item seven, approval of the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I move to the approval consent agenda presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. On to item eight of the regular agenda. Present for approval, final exception of the acceptance of the design and installation of solar arrays on the Courthouse and 501 East Iverson Project, and direct the clerk to advertise for final payment to Creative Energies LLC, the balance due on the forty-first day following the first advertisement. The final cost of the contract was $178,976. Jake, good morning.
Good morning. So this is just the commissioners accepting the project as complete. It, Creative Energies part was done quite a while ago, but we were waiting on some coordination with Rocky Mountain Power that they had to do for us. That was completed about three weeks ago. They had to put new meters in. We experienced, or we had one change order that the, it was to the tune of $2,234, and it was a change order that Rocky Mountain Power required an upgrade for the meter set. And they asked for some other stuff, but I didn't think it was proofable, so I didn't. So with that, we will advertise the project is done, and on the forty-first day, we can release the payment for the retainage.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jake.
Thank you.
I move that we approve the final acceptance and design and installation of the solar array on Courthouse and 501 East Iverson Project, and direct the clerk to advertise for final payment to Creative Energies LLC, balance due on the forty-first day following the first advertisements. The final cost of the contract being $178,976.
Second.
All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item nine, present for approval, grant application to the Bureau of Justice Assistance, 2025 Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant to support the purchase of bulletproof vests for the Albany County Sheriff's Office. Well, good morning, Mr. Paul.
Good morning, commissioners. This is just a yearly updated grant that we have to the Bureau of Justice Affairs to purchase body armor for the Sheriff's Office.
I'm curious, how many vests is this?
This year's, eight to eleven?
Seven.
Seven.
Okay.
This grant, just so you know, we usually see this grant in May or June. We didn't see it for, you know, almost six months later this year.
No, we got it.
Yeah, I mean.
We just use it to essentially replace that equipment every year. So the numbers fluctuate based on expiration dates on that, on that equipment.
Just, I know you've told me this before, but I can't remember how often do the bullet vests have to be replaced?
Four years.
Four years.
Does that include if they've been hit?
No, if, if it does take a firearm round, then we replace it immediately. So think of it the same as kind of that other protective equipment, like a motorcycle helmet or something like that. It's good for a while until.
Yeah.
Until it's used. And once it's used, then it's replaced immediately.
Well, I move we approve the grant application to the Bureau of Justice Assistance, 2025 Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant to support the purchase of bulletproof vests for the Albany County Sheriff's Office as presented. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item ten, discuss opioid settlement funds. Bailey.
Good morning, commissioners. So I did want to put this on your agenda today because other counties are moving on their opioid settlement funding. And so I'm starting to get questions and calls from nonprofits in the community. What, I've talked with Kurt, I've talked with Jennifer about this. My recommendation is we don't move forward on anything right now. We just sit and let this money keep collecting. I have a fear that prevention or drug court may be hit with cuts at the federal level or at the state level this year. We could use then the opioid settlement dollars to then kind of backfill, to close out those programs the way they need to be closed out or reduce the programs the way they need to be. The other, opioid settlement funding can only go for prevention, treatment, or law enforcement. So the other thing when we do move forward is one of the things I've been thinking of maybe putting out an RFP, whatever, to nonprofits. They could apply for them that funding, and then we could issue it kind of like we did ARPA a little bit and community partner that way. But it is my recommendation at this time, until we get through the federal budget, till we get through a state budget, to kind of just sit and wait. There is no deadline that we have to use these, this funding by. The other thing is I included a spreadsheet, a snapshot of the spreadsheet of the revenues we've received. It's very inconsistent. I do not have a dollar amount of what we're, but the final number is that we will be getting, which is very hard to budget anyways. Laramie County has already received over $2 million, so they're moving on things. From my calculations, the total we're supposed to be getting is less than $2 million. But again, all the settlements aren't signed yet. So I just wanted to kind of have a discussion what you're, what you guys would like to. I mean, if you want to move forward on things, we can, and we can start setting things up. But I just wanted to hear from you before I keep telling my opinion to the nonprofit.
I think your advice is, is good, Bailey. I, I would like to have a, a community approach to this. And I think $700,000 or whatever it was, the spreadsheet doesn't allow you to think like that. And so I know the Purdue Farmers, Purdue Farmers signed it there. The judge approved it this last week. So something else should be coming in down the pipe, I believe, as well. So yeah, I think it would be nice to have a community-wide approach to this. In addition to nonprofits, university hospital, those law enforcement people will deal with that. So thank you for that advice.
But currently, we just want to wait and hold that?
That's my recommendation, yes. At least let's get through the end of this fiscal year, our fiscal year, to see what does happen at this date. I know the Department of Health is kind of under scrutiny right now at the state level. Prevention is actually one of the, the areas where they're looking at. So I do just kind of want to wait and see kind of how the dust settles with the new federal budget, with the new state budget, and kind of go from there. And see what ultimately collect between now and then as well. And then we could, I mean, we can then talk about it after the first fiscal year, so after July one, and we can start moving on things, or we can sit and wait some more. There is no deadline on when we have to use this funding. So, but I'm just starting to get questions, and I want to be able to respond that I have discussed it with you. And this was kind of the way we're handling it this time.
It'd be very nice to be able to backfill if we need to.
What were the three uses?
Prevention, treatment, and then law enforcement.
So we could directly fund our own prevention program if we need to?
Yeah, if you want, if you need to, you could. Prevention, just so you know, prevention is combined of federal and state dollars.
No, I, I'm, yeah, I'm in agreement.
So I'll probably plan on bringing this back after kind of July, August, maybe, and we can rediscover it and see how much money we have and go from there. Thank you.
That'd be great. Item eleven, discuss the joint Albany County and City of Laramie revise 1% community partner application.
So one of the projects I've been dying to do is change the community partner application. A good chunk of the community partners don't even fill it out correctly. It's complicated, then there's lots of paperwork. So I approached Sharon Cumbey, the mayor, and I asked her if they'd be on board switching this up. She said absolutely. So one of the things we did is I've met with Sharon Cumbey and two other council members, William Bowling and Mica. Thank you. And Nancy OP. And we've put together a draft of kind of what was the grant application in the PDF form and what we're hoping that it can be. Putting it in a Google form does allow for more streamlined process for everybody. Then there is a opportunity, a way to attach a couple of attachments that we're looking for, like a budget and a financial statement from the nonprofit. So what I had in your packet, I sent you guys a new copy last night, because I did meet with them again yesterday, is what we've put together. Ignore the grammar and punctuation. We haven't gotten that far into editing yet. But I want to make sure that the content is there for what you guys are looking for when you guys make your decisions, when you are funding the community partners. So with that, I'll open it to discussion on your thoughts on what we put together.
Well, I appreciate it. Actually, I think it's really, as somebody who works in the grant field, it's nice to see an electronic form and, and also an easier form to fill out. Can't remember, there was just one quick thing that had a nonprofit radio button, not-for-profit radio button. Those are going to be a bit confusing for people.
They are two different things.
Yeah.
Because we were talking about it yesterday. Yeah, not-for-profit is 501(c)(7) or 501(c)(4). Nonprofits to 501(c)(3). And that question was on the previous application. So the city was kind of hoping that we keep it. I think majority of your applicants are the nonprofits, so.
Well, would it be hard to just say what each one of those are?
No, I could absolutely put that, like, label it as a 501(c). Yeah, I could do that, absolutely.
You would hope that if they're filling it out, that the entity should know exactly.
Right, but this, but I, but I have a problem. Anytime I fill out a form of anything, I'm always second guessing the questions. And so I think that would just make it a little bit easier, less, less second guessing.
And I'm assuming you would get to the language granting entities reserve the right to waive any information or informality and smittle and reject all funding proposals that are in the best interest of the community. Change that to aren't.
Yeah.
Okay.
Again, I haven't had Jennifer look at it yet. Because this application does get released January second. So we did, we're in a time crunch, and we're just trying to make sure it's ready by then.
I think it's an improvement, Bailey.
Thank you, for sure.
Yeah, and just so you know, so we did change the rec board application to be a Google form as well. I'm very glad we did that one first. It has less applicants, because we did run into a few roadblocks. You always do. One of the things is, as the granting agency or as, yeah, I guess the granting agency, so us and the city need to have Gmails. I already have a Gmail because the state requires me to have a Gmail, because they're all on Gmail. So the city's working on that. If she doesn't have a Gmail, we'll just then send everything over to her via email or Dropbox or something. The other thing is, the nonprofit or the applicant also needs to have a Gmail to then upload documents into this. Majority of them do. They do have that. But talking to the city and what we did with rec board is we want to give another option, but not it be the primary option. So what we will do is we will turn this into a fillable PDF, but they then have to reach out to me or Nancy to get that fillable PDF. Because if you have a Gmail, you really should use this form, because that's the whole point, is to make it more of a streamlined process, simpler for everybody. So just so you know that if there is, if you guys come across a nonprofit that's having issues, there is that other option. We're just hoping everybody, even the majority, to do this option. Anything else?
Sounds great.
Have you guys liked all the questions in there? There wasn't something I took out that you guys are really dying to put back in? Okay, just making sure. All right.
Thank you, Bailey.
Yes.
Item twelve, present for approval, First Amendment to Agreement between the Board of County Commissioners of Albany County, Wyoming, and Archon Incorporated for Pilot Hill Trailhead Parking. Sarah?
I'm just going to give you the start of it, and then Sarah can. I know. So this update is because they've had some delays that need to be now put off until the spring for landscaping and things. But Sarah can talk to you directly about what those are, and then if you have any questions for me about the actual amendment, I'd be happy to help.
Well, good morning again, Sarah.
Good morning, Commissioner Johnson. Go Sarah and Hoff. Thank you, Jennifer. We kind of look alike.
I know, a little bit.
Commissioner Jones, Go Sarah and Hoff, we are asking for a change of date for the substantial completion to June 30th. As you know, our construction season is somewhat narrow in Laramie. And because of several delays that primarily had to do, we had to kind of redesign the detention pond, because we found that the protective layer of soil over the waterline that was underneath was not deep enough to keep it from freezing. So we did that. We also had a delay with our electrical service. Pacific Power and Light was not able to get a transformer to us in time to get that put in, in time to be able to operate any irrigation systems. And we just felt that all in all, it was better off, we were better off to push all of the irrigation and the planting of landscaping to the spring so that we are ensured that those plants will survive the winter. We do believe that we will be able to, we've met with the city, we do believe that we'll be able to submit a request for a temporary certificate of occupancy for this winter. We hope to have that possibly mid-December to late December, so that we can welcome the community to park in the parking lot and utilize the restrooms and the shelter facility, and then go back in in the spring and finish up the landscaping work that needs to be done. So the request is to change the substantial completion date to June 30th of 2026 and leave the general conditions that will meet the requirements of the grant to the December 30th, 2026 date. If you have any questions or concerns, I hope you all received the email I sent a couple of weeks ago. Some photographs of the project in progress. It's changed substantially since then, but we're really excited about how it's going to serve our community.
I move we approve the First Amendment to Agreement between the Board of County Commissioners of Albany County, Wyoming, and Archon Incorporated for Pilot Hill Trailhead Parking as presented. Second.
All those up there?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Sarah, thank you. Item thirteen, present for consideration, a request for an exemption from a large track subdivision process situated in Section 1 Township 14 North Range 73 West for the Sixth Prime Meridian. Jory, good morning.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, commissioners. So we have Janelle Gattis and Frederick Tindall are requesting an exemption from the large track subdivision regulations. They want to create a 38.55 acre tract from a 206.5 acre tract of land under Chapter 5, Section 5 of the county subdivision resolution. These exemptions, they need to include a legal description or a record of survey. They need to address any water rights on the properties. They need to provide a water supply study. Or on the survey, they can provide a statement that says no proposed central water supply system. And overall, that must create less than 10 parcels. Based on all this information, this request for an exemption meets all the criteria required for.
I really, I don't have anything. I move that we approve the request for an exemption from the large track subdivision process situated on Section 1 Township 14 North Range 73 West of the Sixth Prime Meridian. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Jory. Item fourteen, present for approval, Amendment 1 to Cooperative Agreement for Responsibilities Between Wyoming Department of Family Services Child Support Program and Albany County Clerk of District Court. Good morning, Stacy.
Good morning, commissioners. This is the cooperative, cooperative agreement that we enter every two years just basically to receive and distribute child support through the, the state's child support system. The amendment that they have put in is to change the, or update the language of the IRS publication. One's 1075. The county attorney has reviewed it. They made some modifications. We sent it back and they, they returned it. And it's, it's just, like I said, it's just changing some of the wording to update the, the language for the, for the IRS information that is included in the agreement.
All right. I move we approve Amendment 1 to the Cooperative Agreement and Responsibility between Wyoming Department of Family Services Child Support Program and Albany County Clerk of District Court. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Stacy. Item fifteen, present for approval, engagement letter with Hathaway and Coons for assistance with preparation of the spec resolution and valid question. Jennifer?
Good morning, commissioners. This is Rick Thompson is the attorney at Hathaway and Coons, who has been the attorney who has assisted with the language of the ballots and the bond language, I think in the 2018 SPO and also the 2010 SPO. So this engagement letter is for the county's portion of his services. The city is also executing a similar agreement, and he was reaching out to Rock River. I haven't talked to Jody to see if they executed it or not. But we'll do, I'll do all the initial drafting. I've asked the city, the airport, and Rock River, but I already got theirs, to give me the detailed description of their projects. And then I am consolidating that into draft language for the resolution and ballot that I'll run back through Bob Sutherland and Jody Shea, and then we'll get it to Rick that first week in December, so that hopefully we can have it finalized, so you'll have it at your first meeting in January.
So Jennifer, is his total bill 375 an hour, or is that just our take of, of his bill?
It, his, his total bill is 375 an hour, but he will split out his time for the commissioners' part and the city, the county, the city and Rock River.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I move that we engage, or approve the engagement letter with Hathaway and Coons for the assistance preparing in their preparation of that resolution and valid question. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Aye, motion carries. I am sixteen percent for acceptance of the two retail liquor license applications and continue with the processing of the licenses for Wyoming statute. Bayla?
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Um, I put out a notice in the paper for the two new retail liquor licenses that were authorized for Albany County due to the population increase. Um, I received two applications, uh one from Phoenix at the Snowy's LLC, which is the old Snowy Mountain Lodge and then Old Corral. Um, which is obviously the old Carol up in Centennial right now, they have a restaurant liquor license, so they would like a retail license. Um, so I received both applications. Um, I haven't done anything with them yet. I wanted to bring them to you first to to just let you know that I received them and then I guess as of direction, if you'd like me to move forward on processing these applications, I will, um, if you, if you accept the applications and I can move forward, I will uh send these to the Liquor Commission for their uh review. Um, I'll put a notice in the paper for the applications and then do the normal processes, what we do and then have a public hearing and then whether or not you guys approve them or not. But I wanted to bring them forward and just let you know that I did receive two and then whether or not you would like me to move forward with the applications. If you have any questions.
I don't have any problem moving forward, but it doesn't fall on me to do the work, so.
And that's why, I mean, the, it's, it's not a huge amount of work. Um, they've streamlined the application pretty good to the Liquor Commission, so I've, I've pretty much got everything from both applicants right now. So we'll just go through the process of advertising. You know, back in the day, you used to have to put the notice out to the to the establishments and it was always kind of funny to get to drive around the county and get to put them all up, but you don't have to do that any longer, so. It's actually an easier process now than what it used to be, but yeah.
You said the Phoenix at the Snowy's is the Snowy Mountain Lodge? Is it owned under different ownership now?
They just, uh, someone purchased it.
We've split it into two LLCs, so there's the lodge and then the Phoenix. The Phoenix is the restaurant.
Okay.
Well, that makes sense.
Okay, now I'm, I'm tracking a little more because I, I knew who owned it and this would be rather unusual. Okay.
Yeah, the church owned it.
Yeah, that, yes, that, that's where I was kind of going with that and. I don't know. We accept the, the two retail liquor license applications to continue with the process as per Wyoming State Stat. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, thank you guys. Item seventeen, present for concurrence Albany County Board of Commissioners Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero one seven, City of Laramie, Wyoming Resolution twenty twenty-five dash nine one, a resolution of twenty-two members to the Environmental Advisory Committee for the City of Laramie, Wyoming.
So Commissioners, this is similar to the resolutions that we have conferred with previously. The city makes these appointments, we concur with the appointments. We do the same when we make appointments, we send it to the city for their concurrence.
That anything?
No.
I move we concur with the Albany County Board, uh, excuse me. I move that we concur as the Albany County Board of Commissioners with Resolution twenty twenty-five zero one seven, City of Laramie, Wyoming Resolution twenty twenty-five ninety-one, resolution of twenty-two members of the Environmental Advisory Committee for the City of Laramie.
All those in favor?
I'll, I'll say, I'll second and yes, I didn't know if we needed the names or.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Then we got through it.
Item eighteen, present for approval, agreement between Board Commissioners of the County of Albany, Wyoming and Little Joe Company LLC for janitorial services at Albany County Supervised Treatment Program Offices.
So Heather couldn't be here this morning, but they, Heather called and got three quotes for cleaning in their office. I believe there's a memo in your packet as well as the contract for Little Joe. Her recommendation was to go with Little Joe LLC for the cleaning of those offices.
I move we approve the agreement between the Board of Commissioners of the County of Albany, Wyoming and Little Joe Company LLC for janitorial services at Albany County Supervised Treatment Program Offices. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Jennifer. Item nineteen, uh executive session pursuant to Wyoming statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five A double I and triple I.
Madam Chair, I move that we uh I can't even remember.
To go in.
Go into, I was going to say remove. Um, so executive session pursuant to Wyoming statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five A double I and triple I today, uh, you need November eighteenth.
We'll need it when I start the little recording, yep.
At, at ten oh four AM today. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much, yes. Thank you. Very excited about this.
So how long has that been split up then?
Um, very recently, yeah, September first was when um the um the transaction, I guess, occurred. Um, and then now, so we intend on opening to the pub, public. We're going to be open breakfast, lunch and dinner. Um, where, and then anyone that stays in the cabins, um, part of the lodging fee is breakfast, lunch and dinner as well included. So we're going to keep it kind of casual for the snowmobilers, breakfast and lunch, and then dinnertime, we're going to do elevated defined dining. Where that's like my entire background is from there, so. I was a chef out in Jackson Hole for the last ten years and um Sandra approached me out there and asked to partner up for the restaurant, so.
Came to a slower paced area.
Yeah, no, that's fine with me. This is my passion and I'm so excited.
Good, good.
Thank you so much.
That sounds great.
Alrighty.
Best of luck with that.
I appreciate it, thank you.
To Jerry.
Hi Jerry.
We'll start with personnel and Anthony Seba.
Please state the, the.
Oh yeah, the day, the day, November eighteenth at
Thank you.
Ten oh six.
Thank you.
Isn't it hard to do minutes, Bayla?
No, it's the.
They have a motion to return to regular session.
Chair, move if we return, leave executive session and return to regular session at 10:53.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item 22, action.
Madam Chair.
Regarding executive session.
Excuse me. Madam Chair, move we verify, or excuse me, ask the chair to sign the verified motion for order to show cause.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item 23, approve payroll and vouchers for November 2025.
Madam Chair, move we approve payroll and vouchers for November 2025.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item 24, seeing no further business before the Board of County Commissioners, they have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you everyone.
Yeah, my kind words. Thank you.